Commissioner Reeves has informed the court that she will not be able to attend today's meeting, and have not received word from Commissioner Ramos's office. Moving forward to communications and recognitions, I don't believe that there's any forms that have been submitted. Therefore, we'll go ahead and move forward to consent items. Is there a motion to open the consent items? A motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reeves, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number, on consent items, items one through ten have not been officially opened. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second has been made by Commissioner Reeves, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number eleven. An appropriate action to record in Commissioners' Court official minutes by District Clerk's office and on behalf of the 365th Judicial District Court, a court order in setting salary and fringe benefits of Maverick County Auditorium and Assistant Auditors. Is there a motion to open that item?
No.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reeves, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in... Did those get covered up during discussion, or did... All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number thirty is now open for discussion, Commissioner. Mr. Yano?
Thank you so much. Basically, this is just a oversight of court order by District Judge 365th on salary alignments for auditor and auditor staff for your review and authorizations on Commissioners' Court to be able to move on the official minutes, and that will be then moved over to our District Courts and our officials.
Commissioner?
Yes, I have... I'm looking at the salaries included for our special. Do you know what percentage, what they were not the salaries compared to last year, this year's salary?
I know, Commissioner, in reference and under deal of the actual documentation of the court orders they will submit to my office, actually the date that we submitted a proposed budget, because I informed that I couldn't proceed with moving forward on their salary until I receive an order. I have been informed by Judge Ortiz, there have been already orders that have been signed off on, however, we have not received them yet. Upon receiving those orders, I went ahead and reviewed them, and it's my understanding that there are four that are above five percent on those matters and requests that are coming before the court today. And I think, believe it, those individuals were listed as Ricardo Sanchez, Carlo Masuta, Pablo Fernandez, and Gloria Vargas. They're one about three-five percent threshold.
This is a mandate from the District.
From the District District Court.
Well, let me put it this way. Instead of salary increase for the rest of employees, as you said, in your position in charge of our finances...
As we continue reviewing the entire process for the actual, the employees of our county, obviously, we're looking at every and possible way to see what it is that can be done if there is going to be a modification. There is a proposed budget that has been filed, however, that's still a working document. Between now and the actual completion of the budget process, of course, the court has that right, of course, to modify the actual numbers that have been presented as the budget officer. But, of course, that's not going to be an issue where we can look at these matters and say that we're the ethically responsible and stewards for those actual dollars that are coming in. It's, at this point, there has not been anything proposed yet. We are, of course, looking at our longevity for our employees to make sure that that is covered throughout this fiscal year. But I have yet to be able to identify the necessary funding for those necessary reviews for actual salary increases. As of this point, it would only be the Auditor's Department that's actually being considered by order of the District Judges.
I think that every time, you know, I've been here in this office for a number of years, and it's automatic, I think it's automatic, whatever comes from the judge's decision. It's just that, according to the Social Security Administration, the cost of living increases two-point-five percent. And for, and for the Auditor's Office to get above five percent, that is a little bit too much. And considering the finances of the county, which is not really too healthy, that we would try to get as much leeway to present something to the employees, and you know, looking at the order that they give special salary to the Auditor's Department, which includes plus the medical, plus the hospitalization insurance, plus fringe benefits, plus longevity, does that all have, do we have any say-so? Or we're just gonna have to, like we've done before, that we just approve it as a mandate, because it is a mandate. It is an order that the District Clerk of Maverick County, as he said, shall report the most the action to the Court, to Commissioners' Court, to observe and record in our minutes the salary increases. And I need to say that I'm not against the salary going, salaries increases for the Auditor's Department. I think they merit an increase. I think they work hard, you know. By and large, I mean, we can say that it's part of Maverick County. However, there is, if I can say it, some kind of, shall we say, some kind of discrimination, because our employees have not seen anything yet. As you just tried to explain, the way we might not get a salary increase for the employees, it hurts. You know, they're very well educated and very well kept up with the laws in the Auditor's Department, and I have no problem with that. I think they deserve a salary increase. But just the fact that the rest of employees are not getting much, or maybe zero percent salary increase, which it hurts. I mean, what about the guys that drive with the heavy equipment and they didn't think? Are the clerks or the clerks in the county, are they gonna get anything? And the guys out there, the widdies, you know, in the afternoons, and what are they expecting from us? And for us to say something, at least, I know that it's an order, that we must comply. I have no problem with that. Is that, it's, you know. I know it comes from, perhaps from the legislature, or perhaps from the Constitution or Texas, that requires for all the county to, just to accept whatever it is, but I just, I have to have a consideration for the rest of the employees. And it, at least for me, it just, it hurts that if we don't get anything for our employees that really deserve. Yes, longevity also is included for, if anything, they're gonna get longevity, reward or payment, which is something. But an actual salary increase for mana, I know that you're squeezing the number as much as possible, but I don't think they will get even closer to a two-point-five percent, the Social Security says, that's the cost of living increase in United States. You're not gonna get that much, I hope. That we will put, really looking forward to it. And it's a mandate from the judge's, I don't think, it's just that I need to say also that it's just not equated with intent of giving a salary increase for those employees, the rest of employees, the rest of the team, they are not getting much for many, I think, salary increase. And it really hurts you. And I need to say, because, you know, it just happens every year, every time.
I think that that's something that's important to figure out, and I can concur to you, Commissioner, that those are obviously, again, very valid points that need to be brought up and placed on the record for this purpose. I think that I had some very healthy discussions with both of the District Judges regarding these concerns, of course, that I had had, and the lack of communication between the District Judges and myself as the District, as the Budget Officer, to see what exactly it could be, because I think that should be a first step as far as what it is that we're even considering when it comes to the budget process and to take everything into effect. At the end of the day, while every department is independent of their own respective area, I think that we all should be making sure that we're moving forward together as one team in our town. Because at the end of the day, that should be the effect and the overall approach that it should be taking as those that are obviously held with a responsibility, being stewards of this government, and to move forward with that. I do know, of course, that there are some concerns with that. My only concern is the life between the concern of those that are above the five percent, which through Local Government Code 111.074, the county Auditor's Assistant Salary shall not exceed five percent without approval of Commissioners' Court. So therefore, I think that on those particular matters, we do need to review the matter, and I think that I would like to kind of just review that possibly with legal, to see what our concerns are for those that are above that five percent threshold, maybe get what is the reasoning, and of course, to go fully understand the requests that was coming forth from these, from the judges. You saying this is an issue that is against the Auditor's Office and in which they perform. I do believe that they merit it when they're keeping the finances and others working together with the offices. But we just need to make sure that if this isn't going to be a fair across-the-board issue, then we need to be sure it will be fair within the designations that are coming forth on these matters. And while we see it in every sense of the way, you know, construction that we have just had a approach for many years that has never truly taken into consideration of the budget in general. And as we see, you know, the staffs continue to raise in their salaries, this is gonna be something that, you know, at some point is, when is there a point to where you reach a happen in an issue? Municipalities, governing bodies, all have that. I think that we need to just be looking at these issues to where you can't continue just getting such increases without there being a proper merit evaluation and reviewing these processes. I have some questions for legal on this matter, so I mean, this would be an issue that legal obviously asked the court at this point, if we would take it into executive session.
Perhaps we should take this matter in the next, later stages, you know.
For sure.
But at that point of information, sir, just for the sake of salaries, elected officials in Maverick County, I know commissioners have not received any, no, I'm not proclaiming salary increase for elected officials. For that, I'm saying just keep it the way it is, but let's take care of it.
For sure. He's totally agree with you, Commissioner.
Yes. I totally agree with Mr. Reeves. I feel, I feel you. I've had different departments come before me and request that. And the judge, I know we have a pending meeting to discuss my budget at your office. And I did ask Ms. Gloria Valentos for a meeting. I was scheduled to meet next week, because I wanted to bring this request before you. I totally agree that all the county employees should get some type of salary increase. But I wanted to meet with Ms. Valentos before I meet with you, to bring you, to see where we can make some adjustments or how we can make it happen. So hopefully, I'm asking as well for you to take into consideration to see how we can help all of these.
Commissioner. Is there anything further on this side? If not, what we will do is I'll have to ask the Court for its consideration. This item will be taken into executive session. Mr. Guevara, you need to excuse your people in half, and we'll get this item addressed to you as soon as we have it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Moving forward on to the next items, item number eleven, discussion on appropriate action regarding any number funds amount to be used for to use for the debt, any calculation of 2025 debt tax rate. Estimated debt service fund balance of one-one-four-five-four-two-three-one. For purposes of the Court, I've had a discussion with our financial advisor on this particular matter, discussing this particular issue. I believe that at this point, the Court, of course, has been running on the necessary numbers that have been provided for the calculations of the actual tax rate before we can fully perform and have a full tax rate provided to the Court. And of course, it's just a recommendation as the Budget Officer at this time, unless there was any other major issue that we were dealing with, which is that this time or not, that we would not utilize any funding from this debt service fund balance at this time for the calculation of that rate. This rate that we are looking at is currently possibly a rate that would be lowered into this next fiscal year. So based on this term and on the agreements, we would just need to put forward a motion that would not request any of this be utilized for its calculation purposes. Financial advisor has also recommended the same. Is there a motion?
Move it.
Motion's been made to move forward with the item as presented. Is there a second? Second has been made by Commissioner Ramos, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number twelve, discussion on appropriate action to consider approval, rejection, and/or action thereto regarding proposals received by Maverick County for electric service providers. Is there a motion to open that item?
Move it.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Reeves, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item is so open. Based on this particular item, this has been an issue that has been requested by the county, by the Auditor's Department upon a couple of months, upon review of items that have been coming forth for the contract that has already been awarded by the Court. There's obviously a pending issue that needs to be addressed by the Auditor's. My request to go ahead and proceed with moving that forward, Chavez, is there a clarification that needs to be brought to the Court at this time?
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners. On this item in particular, we have a previously requested proposal for electric service providers. We have already presented with you, and I understand there's also a decision I remake to take this along as a assault and robbery for this.
But this question...
However, these proposals need to be rejected, accepted. It's up to Commissioners' Court to move forward with the next steps.
Is there a motion to reject?
Move it.
Motion's been made to, by Commissioner Reeves, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number fourteen, discussion, sorry?
Thirteen.
Thank you so much. Thank you for keeping this on track. All right. Item number thirteen, discussion on appropriate action to accept and open request for qualifications for on-call engineering services and any action thereto, item number FY twenty-five dash zero-two. Is there a motion to open that item? Motion's been made by Commissioner Reeves, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Motion is, item is so open, Commissioner.
There are six of them.
There are six?
There are search for employees.
Okay. The Clerk's Office has informed the Court that there are six requests that have been submitted for the Court's consideration. First item is being submitted by Streamline Engineering. This was submitted on August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at four forty-one P M. As the record reflect, that there has been three binders that have been submitted with this proposal, providing the Court with the necessary documentation on this particular item. There's no necessary, basically, it's just qualifications, right?
Yes.
The second one that has come in is from Meta Engineering, Lotus, and this was received on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at ten forty-six A M. As the record reflect, that there have been two binders that have been submitted to the Court alongside with a U S B, providing information to the Court based on their qualifications to be considered. Third proposal. Third proposal has been submitted by AG Three Group LLC. This was filed on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at eleven fifty-nine A M. There's a total of three binders that have been submitted with their qualifications, will be reviewed by the Court. Fourth is, was submitted by Fraysen Nichols on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at twelve forty-three P M. There's a total of three binders that have been submitted for qualification, and they say the qualifications to be reviewed. Fifth packet has been incorporated by Trining Construction and Engineering, submitted on the eighteenth of August at one oh five P M. Their forms have been submitted to the Court with three copies being considered for statements and qualifications. The sixth proposal that has been submitted to the county has been by, was received on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at one forty-eight P M. By half and associates, they have submitted three binders with their qualifications listed specifically for consideration of the Court. These are strictly for qualification purposes and review. At this time, will these be actually accepted or considered for acceptance for this Court? Right now, we would have to begin the next step of qualifying the on-call engineers and setting forth the necessary committee to review these particular engineers, incorporating what is the Department of Engineering, a member of the Commissioners' Court, alongside with the Auditor's Department of political purpose. Is there a motion to proceed with moving forward and qualifying for the on-call engineering services? Is there just accepting and opening these requests? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos. Second. Second by Commissioner Reeves, discussion. Being that there is none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. We'll go ahead and begin our process at this time. Moving forward to item number fourteen, discussion on appropriate action to accept and open request for qualifications for professional engineering services, safe streets and roads for all, S S four A, road safety action plan, and any actions thereto, item number FY two-five dash zero-one. Were there any submitted? None submitted?
On this one, Mr. Icic, I don't know if it's a decision of the Commissioners' Court to re-advertise or, so is it a different way?
Recommend we re-advertise again.
That's what they...
Is that the recommendation by the grant requirements, or once we've actually opened, possibly worked? Out agreements with the on-call engineers on our end, is there a way for us to work with an on-call engineer?
That's not the possible, but typically, they do require that we go out with bids individually.
What's the time frame that we would be looking at for this next go-around?
As quick as we can get it.
Yeah, so this petition is already, is done, so we can advertise with this, so it will also be in a month.
Is there a way that maybe we can also, just in kind of, to make sure that we're advertising, I see that the city does it, can you, is there a way to provide that information so that we can put that out on our social media as well? Because it seems to work for them. I'm just trying to find as many avenues as possible to put information out for the public.
Yes.
Then, motion of course, is there a motion to go ahead and re-advertise? Motion's been made by Commissioner Reeves, is there a second? Second's been made by Commissioner Ramos, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item number sixteen, discussion on appropriate action to promote Mr. Cesar Velagasa Junior, full-time detention officer. Mr. Velagasa will replace Alejandro Reyes, full-time Sergeant Detention Officer, with a salary of seventeen point seventy per hour with an S D twenty-two supplement at zero point twelve cents per hour for a total of seventeen point eighty-two per hour. Is there a motion to open that? Motion's been made by Commissioner Reeves, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Motion, item is so open, discussion on this item. No?
Oh, it's so hard.
We just opened the item. You'd think it was gonna be that easy, didn't you?
It's not very good. I'm so sorry.
All right. Motion has been added for discussion. So in regards to this matter, you can just inform the other Court, please, of the requests that we're making at this time.
He's being promoted to sergeant.
Is there any question from the Court on this side? No? No? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reeves, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Now we have to excuse.
I thought we heard.
Item number fifteen, discussion on appropriate action to consider approval, rejection, or, sorry, fifteen, I'm sorry, it was a problem. Item number seventeen, discussion on appropriate action to promote, again, you got such interim food country director and annual salary of forty-five thousand two eighty-one point eight-six effective August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Is there a motion to open that? Motion's been made by Commissioner Reeves, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number seventeen is now open. At this point, committee members of the Court, I'd just like to inform the Court that has instructed operations to continue with the resignation of the director that has taken form for reasons, of course, of pursuing his education. What I'm gonna go ahead and do is I believe that the Court has a great option at this point to go ahead and move forward with that promotion of Ms. Faenza to serve in that capacity. Ms. Faenza has served a number of years throughout different county operations, serving as pretty much handling the busy operations of the water plant, and she serves under former Commissioners, serving, of course, in distinct capacities, and now, of course, is making sure that the operations are running smoothly for the grid bank. So I'd ask for the obligation to go ahead and move forward with that promotion. Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reeves, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number eighteen, discussion on appropriate action to approve the resolution for Chapter Three, One Project Robin. Mr....
I understand that these are empty tables.
So in reference to that particular item, is there any, is there a reason at this time to consider that? Or is it something that we need to take into executive session?
Just, please take it, two seconds, and I will ask number nineteen as well.
Very well. Chapter, sorry, number eighteen and nineteen, discussion on appropriate action to approve the resolution for Chapter Three, One Project Blue Jane. In reference to these particular items, members of the Court... Project Blue Jane. In reference to these particular items, members of the court, is there a motion, of course, to take this item into executive session? Motion has been made by Commissioner Reese, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, you announce. These items are now placed in executive session. Based on number 20, discussion and appropriate action to approve the renewal of MENT, sorry, Airmet, care network membership for November coming 2025, 2026, fiscal year at a rate of seventy dollars per employee, three hundred eighty-three employees.
There's a journey for me coming for my source, because I just, and it just so happened that I got a phone call today from a particular family, their child, which is how to have to be feeling now. So, I, how do you recommend we continue with this?
Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. Item number 21, discussion and appropriate action to accept the 2025, 2026 TPS contribution for coverage for auto, physical damages, property, equipment, and this item, is there a motion to open? Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, second by Commissioner Reese, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. Item is so open on this particular item. Miss, if you have any specific, just to be presented to the court.
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioner. Basically, this is same policy coverage that we had from the previous year. The coverage has not changed. It's just the amount has increased and decreased in certain coverages. So, I've put down the amounts. So, basically, we're not taking a big loss on this. It only happens on the, on the auto. So, this should mean how, property claims, so that kind of brought it down and brought our auto up. So, we kind of need to job.
I thought it was going to do more than that. Eight hundred fifty dollars.
You did it better.
It could be over in a while.
For more working.
But we're getting that.
Alright, so for that purpose, recommendation from the treasures department on this time is to be reviewed, correct? Recommendation has been made, is there a motion? Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. Item number 22. On this particular item, Mr. Sanchez, you had mentioned that we did not, there was no need to bring this report forward again?
This is the proposed policies I would approve. That was correct. I will ask questions on the office office, for both of the review of our attorney plus a research in the rest of the state. So, it's progressive, so action that was taken last time is correct. And we'll proceed in implementing that policy here.
I'll just go ahead. Moving forward to item number 23, discussion and appropriate action to approve the amendment to local government solutions, LP, LGS, non-impulser, and service agreement, no cost to the county. This agreement is to be executed by the county on behalf of the office of the county attorney. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion has been made by Commissioner Reese, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. Item is so open, members from the DA's office, be prepared to answer.
Good afternoon. So, we're just making a change to our LGS contract, and we'll be saving probably close to fifty dollars.
Is there a motion? Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second's been made by Commissioner Reese, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. Item number 24, discussion and appropriate action to approve LGS addendum four to increase and add users for VPU and OLS. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion has been made by Commissioner Reese, is there a second? By Commissioner Ramos, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. Item is so open. This item is also for the DA's office. Be prepared to inform the court.
This is for OLS and VPU portion. We're just increasing it due to the amount of employees that we hired. So, it's going to go up to four users. But this, of course, is for OLS and VPU grant.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion. What is the percentage basis on this issue? So, if you all are looking at four, addendum to four on this matter, what is being covered by VPU and what's being covered by OLS?
So, for, I attached this packet here for you, and for OLS on LGS monthly is a thousand thirty-five currently, and then for VPU is eight eighty-four. So, I believe it's going to go up about two hundred dollars. But again, it's attached here on the forms here for LGS and VPU.
I just want to make sure that for purposes, because I know there's always a cost allocation question for the auditors, and I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yes, sir.
Have you all had an opportunity to visit on this issue weekend or not?
Yes, we have, and I provided her a copy as well.
Alright, there's no further discussion on this item. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. Item number 25, discussion and appropriate action to approve interim funding for the OLS and VPU salaries and operating expenditures only for the 2025, 2026 grant cycle pending final approval from the governor's office. On this particular issue as well, I know that I've had an opportunity to visit with Mr. Sednae regarding to the actual funding that we are allotting, I know considering for the next fiscal year on this issue. I know that there are considerations that are, should be, or that we should have already received on the VPU side.
Uh, for VPU, it's still pending.
So, I need to, well, I think we're pending, obviously, just to make sure on that issue and to see what's going to be transitioning into that portion of the grant specifically for that. So, I need to be able to, this obviously is interim, as it's listed, but I want to make sure that it's fully understood that we're trying to transition a proportion of this funding into VPU. That is the understanding, correct? That's the discussion that I have with Mr. Sednae, and I just want to make sure that that's clear to the court as well on this particular matter. For that purpose, then, is there a motion on this particular item to proceed? Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. Item number 26, discussion and appropriate action to provide interim funding for the 2025, 2026 grant cycle pending final grant approval in the governor's office to cover three months of OLS employees salaries. On this particular matter, this one was, I believe, submitted, was submitted also with the request of the tower coming forth from the DA's office?
Yes, sir. Twenty-six is?
Twenty-six is countywide. So, on this one, I believe, yeah. This is all we needed to, this is overall. So, we take, you're at a hundred points, twenty-five.
So, for twenty-six, yes, Mr. Yedat, that is overall for OLS, but I did provide in the Excel sheet that I gave you, I provided our department for OLS in there as well.
Yes.
Yes.
Did he say that all indications that going approval was imminent? Is there great chances that everything will be approved?
Yes, sir.
Right now, based on, obviously, the funding mechanisms that we're looking at, obviously, there has been certain cuts that we have made throughout the OLS operation with stipends that have been removed as the discussions have been held by the court and the overall processes. There have been departments that have lost some positions or that have been reduced due to the workload. So, we want to go ahead and make sure that the court is fully advised on this particular issue. I believe that there's only one department that we're still pending a review on that matter, and that was with the sheriff's department, which I know that we have discussion with Sheriff Hartburn in my office regarding the budget and the possibility of their consideration of possibly the reduction in one to two positions that we're looking at there for OLS operations only. So, I know that we are still pending that, and I would just ask for the court's consideration to approve such pending that final review and, of course, discussing that with the sheriff to see what position, of course, he's looking at making obligations to. This, of course, would be contingent upon that funding that is coming forward on that issue. Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second?
Judge, going back to our item?
Is there a second? Second. Discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry. Going back to our item number twenty-four, did you want me to come back to pick up that that addendum pending your signature?
Yes, well, I, what we'll do is, what we can do is, we can get that sent over.
Okay, alright, may we be?
Yes, you all are excused. If you have no other intentions, excuse, thank you. Moving forward to this item, there's no further discussion on items number twenty-six. We'll go ahead and proceed with calling further questions. Is there a mo, further vote? There have motions been made and has been seconded. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. Moving forward to item number twenty-seven, discussion and appropriate action to approve a part amendment of equal point grant, estate phase number one. This particular item, in regards to the overall plat that has been submitted, has basically just been an amendment to a correction of a name on the plat agreement that has been submitted to the court. There was supposed to be Paseo de la, it's a street name. That's basically the only amendment, but the plat had already been approved at the last meeting.
Okay, so we're just changing?
It's a correction, because it was misspelled on the actual.
It's changing from Paseo de la to Paseo de la.
Paseo, yeah. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, second. Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion, item has been so open. So, that's, I apologize for, we'll be bringing into that first. But it is for the purposes of just a name change, just a name correction on this.
On the plat that was already approved?
Yeah, it was.
Okay, yeah, I saw the item and I did. Just send me an email, and then, send me an email. If it's in my present, just follow me. That way I can review it before.
Thank you. So, you made a motion? Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. Item number twenty-eight, discussion and appropriate action to write off accounts receivable of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and five dollars reported in the interest and sinking fund, number two ninety-three, due to, due from water plant fund, number one eighty, and to write off the payable to fund two ninety-three in fund number one eighty. Mr. Reyes? Care to inform the court on this item? Or, I don't know, who else is in the issue, or Ms. Marian?
Yes, Judge, may I?
Um, this is, whenever we have receivable, that we're seeing that it's increasing throughout the years, it is recommended to either write it off or set a sort of a payment plan. For, in this case, is the one eighty that owes the two ninety-third.
Let me stop real quick. Is there a motion to open it?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, second. Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. I apologize for that. Okay, motion has been approved, item is so open. Continue, that's really it. Ms. Mike?
Yes, and since we, the court has to decide to whether wants to write it off or show the intention of paying it off. What attitude?
Recommendation?
To, if there's intention, we, right now, we don't see where there's funds in the one eighty to pay it off, so to write it off.
Have you had a discussion with the auditors on this item? It is, of course, with the reference to the water plant. Is that not your department?
It is, this is the first time it's.
Would you like to go ahead and table the item and have a discussion with the auditor?
Yes, I would, because I don't know what that's in reference to.
Is that your motion now to table the item?
Please.
Motion has been made to table the item by Commissioner Ramos, and I would encourage Ms. Baran to visit with the commissioner in regards to the department. There is a question that falls under her purview. For this purpose, there is a motion, is there a second? Second's been made by Commissioner Reese, discussion.
Yes, the only thing, we don't have a deadline or anything, then we have to meet on the reference to.
Preferably before the end of the fiscal year, nine thirty?
Oh, well, I'm meeting with her on the second of September, so I'll discuss this with her. So, she can brief me on it, because I'm. Thank you.
Okay, for those motions and seconds, further discussion, if there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. Item number twenty-nine, discussion and appropriate action to recognize revenue in amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars during reimbursement second quarter 2025. In regards to this particular item, this is just recognition of revenue. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion has been made by Commissioner Reese, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion. Opening of the item. This is for district courts. Motion has been moved and second for the discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. Item is so open. In regards to this particular issue, Commissioner, this is an item that we do pre-fund in jury program for this purpose for purposes of getting reimbursements that are coming to become from the program through the juror payment plan that is set up through the district court's office. This is the juror reimbursement, second quarter for the purposes of the fiscal year. Is there a motion? Motion has been made by Commissioner Reese, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. Item number thirty has been placed into executive session. Item number thirty-one, discussion and appropriate action to promote Jose Miguel Ramos, PID number thirty-seven, three, three, zero, two, for full-time catalytic investigator, twenty-five dollars per hour to the auto theft task force commander, and a rate of thirty dollars. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, second by Commissioner Reese, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. Motion, item has been still open on this particular item. Mr. Garcia?
We're just promoting him from the catalytic converter grant investigator to the auto theft commander.
Is this a grant?
Yes, this is upon approval of today's budget of items.
Is there a motion? Some motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. Item number thirty-two, discussion and appropriate action to promote Robert Valdez Jr., PID number forty-eight, five, seven, four, five, from deputy corporal at twenty dollars point five cents per hour to the auto theft investigator, and a rate of twenty-five dollars per hour. Sir, is there a motion to open the item? Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce. Motion has been approved, and item is now open.
Since it's going to be a transfer to the auto theft.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You announce.
Thank you.
Sheriff, do you all have any other items? Do you have any other items? Just the executive session, correct? Y'all are excused. I may have just one question for you regarding the items that we have kind of reported. Item number twenty, I'm sorry, number thirty-three, discussion and appropriate action to approve the hiring of Claudia Nicole Valdez as a full-time assistant civil coordinator for the 365 judicial district court, an annual salary of fifty-five thousand plus health insurance for fringe benefits, effective the first place in state following her approval of hiring by commissioners' court. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion has been approved, item is so open. Judge?
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioner. This is a vacancy that's currently existing in my office. A few months ago, you approved the hiring of a different individual who stayed with us for two or three months, but then was hired by the city as an assistant city manager, so. as a assistant city manager, so they created a vacancy again. I conducted several interviews and after conducting all the interviews, I certainly proposed and recommend that Mr. Valdez be hired. She actually listed Commissioner Ramos as a reference. I spoke to Commissioner Ramos and she highly recommends, which I would certainly recommend that to the court as well.
That is my motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese's discussion?
Yes, congratulations, I was trying to bring her on board, but I couldn't find an opening in my office, so congratulations.
Motion has been made, second's been uh done, is there a further discussion? There is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number thirty-four, discussion and appropriate action to approve the hiring of Lorena Christina La Fuente as a full-time criminal court coordinator for the three sixty fifth judicial district court at an annual salary of sixty thousand plus health insurance and fringe benefits effective on September eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Is there a motion to open it? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese's discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Motion's been approved, item is so open. Judge?
Again, thank you. Um this is a vacant position also, I have not had a criminal court tenure since uh January of this year. La Fuente worked in my office for a period of years before she moved to San Antonio to continue her education. She opinionated master's degrees currently working for a law firm in San Antonio, but is now planning on moving back equal pass, so again, I recommend this position.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese's discussion? Of course, as mentioned, in all of the other uh concerns, of course, taking the twenty-four um looking towards that final budgetary uh approval, that's just for the next year to make sure that everything is is properly uh appeared to, so I just, I just don't know this on that. Uh just for that purpose, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Thank you, Judge. You have no other items, you're excused. Item number thirty-five, discussion and appropriate action to approve now the county water plant employees to enter property at one one four five one, North U S Highway two seventy-seven and ten nine nine seven, North U S Highway two seventy-seven to water meter. Commissioner Ramos, is there a motion to open it? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, second by Commissioner Reese's discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item is so open.
I'm gonna, I have a legal question in this matter, so I'll let you take this. Thirty-five and thirty-nine, oh, and thirty-seven.
Is there a motion uh by, is that your motion to take items number thirty-five, thirty-seven, and thirty-nine? For executive session? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese's discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number thirty-five, thirty-seven, and thirty-nine will be taken in for executive session. Item number thirty-six, discussion and appropriate action to request approval of payment of four hundred and eight dollars to P M P Enterprises Electrical Contract or L L C invoice, zero 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 four one five, due to an emergency at the water plant. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese's discussion, being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number thirty-six is so open, is there a motion?
That's my motion.
Motion has been to approve the item as presented, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese's discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number thirty-eight, discussion and appropriate action to allow legal to draft a memorandum of understanding regarding the Elm Creek parking lots. Is there a motion to open the item, Commissioner? Commissioner has made a motion uh for uh the opening of this item, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese's discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. This is on the opening of the item, is there? Unanimous. Very well. Uh item is so open, we'll go ahead and move into discussion. Commissioner?
Another uh memorandum of understanding with whom?
With, I'm sorry, with Tech Stop.
Would you like to make a modification and a motion to clarify that?
Yes, that's my motion to amend the item.
Very well. Motion has been made uh to um go ahead and move forward uh with um this to reflect discussion and appropriate action to allow legal to draft a memorandum of understanding with Tech Stop regarding the Elm Creek parking lots. There is a motion by Commissioner Ramos and a second by Commissioner Reese's discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so amended. Item remains open uh for this discussion. Is there any further discussion on the side? And what is clarified that needs to be done, Commissioner?
We just need to enter, I've already met with the Tech Stop engineers of the Elm Creek Park, and they've asked me to submit um an item for approval to work on a memorandum of understanding so that we can share the parking lot of their lease notes. So um I'll get with legal and they'll scope the words of that project.
Tech Stop, very much, very well. Is there a motion then to approve the um the allowance of Commissioner Ramos to proceed with um drafting a memorandum of understanding together with legal counsel uh to present to the court for final approval? Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese's discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number forty, discussion and appropriate action to accept checks from Maverick Recycling and Metals as follows, check number zero, I'm sorry, check number three two five two zero for two hundred and sixty-two point fifty for salvaging scrap metal following structure fire at warehouse located at Saint Annie Street uh at the radar base. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese's discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item is so open, is there a motion to approve? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese's discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number forty-one, discussion and appropriate action to discuss contract with Blacktop Racing. Is there a motion to open the item? Is there a motion to place this into executive session? Item has been placed by uh executive session by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese's discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so moved into executive session for consultation with the attorney. Item number forty-two, discussion and appropriate action to discuss outstanding purchase order for Camaro Valve and Fire Hybrid Project. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese's discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so opened. Commissioner?
Yes, Judge, we just, on that item, I just needed status on the, on that grant. Yes, the Camaro Valve? We submitted um a purchase order and, but they're not here, cable is not here, I see, how to fund?
No, sure, yes, no, he's out, today um ill, I have to keep this not really actually. Um but I know for a fact in regards to anything that's pertaining to the actual, the C D B G uh funding, is that correct? This is the one that we're looking at on that particular. About procedure, procedural issue, this is an issue that has been addressed um through um Mid-Oreos. They are handling that uh particular grant on that issue. Isaac, I don't think that we had anything specific to grad administration on that one grant, is that correct?
Not with that specific one, I know.
Um Commissioner, I would, I would go ahead and ask on that uh issue for purposes of discussion uh to move forward on that. Um is there something specific, so that way we can make sure that we can address this property at the next court?
The budget amendment, I think, I believe there was a budget amendment that was pending, I just want to make sure, was that included in in this one? Okay, so then there's no action needed, if the budget amendment was included, so that we can move forward? If you need a copy, I think he needs um as long as it's, and it's not so we can include it uh with a budget amendment? Because I think we were.
Budget amendments are here, thirty-five now.
Thirty-five, so then there's no action.
Big Canadian Associates?
Correct.
Yes.
It's already included in the next.
It's engineering studies.
You can just include those uh e-voices when the court takes consideration on the cause favorable.
Because um talking to Gable, the planning director, he said that was uh that's, that's what was holding the project back. The other way. So there's no action needed on that.
Correct. Submitted.
Because it's been pending since um.
Was the issue there funding, as to where you were going to take it out?
No, no, that's, that's a grant.
But as far as pre-funding, the issue is obviously coming up with that, correct? The amounts?
I don't know. Well, it was.
So there was a transfer in and a transfer out fund, so specifically this is an issue from the four-three-four fund, which the four-three-four fund is.
Taking it out of uh the plan, the engineering to the the fund.
Correct. But the engineering studies fund is coming specifically for the planning department.
Correct, but they had it, they had the budget amendment, and they were waiting for that, so that's what was holding the engineer company to, so we could move forward.
So do you have a question, ma'am? You have a question?
I've got it, it's there, I might even move forward, I might even move my.
All right, uh then if there is nothing further, do you need any action?
No.
Perfect. There is no action that's required at this time from uh the purposes of item number forty-two, I'm glad that we move forward. Item number forty-three, discussion and appropriate action to discuss county electric provider. Uh is there a motion to open the item? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese's discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item is so open. In regards to the actual uh county electric provider of, I'm sorry, just Commissioner.
Yeah, on that one, well, I asked for a status report on while it was pending for the Justice Center, and they told me that we couldn't move forward because we didn't have an uh electricity provider, and we were just uh we're moving forward for them. Or we're advertising?
No, we've already had, the court has approved, how many months ago?
June.
June? So the court approved in June, uh the process of moving forward was actually getting everything together with Mr. Abadondo. Um at that time, of course, we were pending what was the actual notice of moving forward, that there was a need to make an uh adjustment to the actual R F Qs uh or R F Ps that had been received and to actually cancel that. But we've taken care of that today.
Today.
I received, we received notice from the auditors at the last meeting as well as needed, so.
Yeah, because that's.
That's why it took months.
We've been waiting for months to try, I mean, we want to get the justice, the J P in her office operating, they keep telling me we don't have an electricity provider, and Mr. Reese is going through the same with your building.
And any other right that you all are requesting?
The only.
On the streets.
My concern was getting the J P in her building. Thank you.
We finally, we finally got that later today, so apparently there was a lot of the issues that needed today identified that were not clearly sent over to purposes of uh having court action. Uh but we've, we've been able to address this issue through the auditor's office.
So we can move forward with that?
Once we have an actual approved um position of, I'm sorry, an actual approved provider, which Mr. Abadondo, has he received all of the documentation that is requested? Pablo, I know that you all have been in the once meeting with that issue between the auditors and our office, what is the issue?
We'll continue working.
What is needed?
Uh we're, we're gonna continue working.
But is there an issue with the contract? Because I don't want to leave to his name and then turn around and say, well, there's an issue with the contract.
We read the contract.
So we're ready to proceed with.
With him making a recommendation to the court.
He will do all the services um listed on his contract.
Correct.
Into the procurement for these services.
Because he, he sent over an email to us where we were notified that they hadn't received any documentation from our office. So I needed to kind of just make sure that we were fully.
I don't really understand.
Does he want Commissioner Ramos to bring another item to the court?
Yeah, I need to, I will.
We'll go to the, uh.
But I trust that Mr. Rodriguez is gonna take care of it.
All right, so in regards to this item, Commissioner?
I don't need an action, you took care of it, it's a danger.
Item number forty-four, uh discussion and appropriate action regarding safe streets and roads for all agreements that was done on June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four with Black Pearl Publications, is there a motion to open the item?
No, I'm gonna wait till all that.
Item's been so open. Uh is there a motion to move forward with uh opening um item number forty-five, Commissioner Morales is not here, which is of the court to hold off until the next meeting?
Correct.
Is that um a consideration? Can I have that in the form of a motion, please?
Some of.
Motion's been made by Commissioner uh Ramos to hold this item until Commissioner was present. Uh is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese's discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number forty-six, I'll go ahead and take that item um and address that uh after a final approval and reveal of uh the executive session items. Um okay, we'll go ahead and move into executive session. Uh this time, uh we'll move uh forward with items number eighteen and nineteen. Was an item that was being uh placed into executive session. Item number thirty is being placed into executive session. Forty-five, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, forty-one, forty-six, forty-seven, eight. One, parks fees interlocal agreement with the city legal pass, two, city legal pass firing E M S negotiations, three, settlement agreement with Macho Services, four, jail inmate housing agreements, five, Epi Canus and Hyatt T L L C contract. Uh let the record reflect that the court will move into executive session at four forty-eight P M on Monday, August twenty, two thousand twenty-five.